Yep, at this point, before we begin our special meeting, organizational meeting, we are going to conduct the oath of office for board members Trish Baker, Amy Daly, Dewey Gantz, and Chris Scott. If you could all come up in front here, please. And we're going to have Sarah get some film on this. And Tom is kindly agreed to giving you the oath.
Why don't we just do it all at once, okay?
We can't because we have our names.
Yeah.
You can say your own name. Just don't say.
I learned that the hard way once at the county. I tried to do a bunch of different names.
Okay.
All right.
Pardon?
I.
Amy Daly.
Trish Baker.
Chris Trish Baker. Having been elected to the school board of the Stevens Point area public school district, swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin, and will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of setting office to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We're in three years of this.
Right.
Yes, sign them and pass them over. Be sure to include your driver's license. I do want proper identification.
Just kidding.
Auto ID.
Yeah, make sure it's not.
Swear in the entire company.
Absolutely.
I want something. Hi, Dr. Wachsebauer.
All right. Okay. We're on to two.
Okay, I am going to call the special school board meeting of April 24, 2017, to order. This evening, I am sitting in temporarily for our board president, who was unable to be here this evening. So, we need a roll call from our secretary.
Ms. Baker. Here. Ms. Daly.
Here.
Mr. Eple.
Here.
Ms. Earler's excused, Mr. Gantz is excused, Mr. Kantos.
Here.
Ms. Portson.
Here.
Ms. Rannau.
Here.
Ms. Scott.
Here.
We have a forum.
I'd say we have a point order on that. We didn't take it open, so at this time, we're an eight-member board, wouldn't we?
You're correct.
Correct.
Thank you.
Item four on our agenda this evening is the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item five on our agenda is public comments.
There was not.
Nothing? Nothing? Okay. Item six on our agenda is the selection of a temporary chairperson to preside for the election of president. Normally, we ask the superintendent to take over and to temporarily preside while we elect the president, so if I could have a motion.
Ms. Scott, being our president isn't here, he would need to fill in for the vice president.
Right.
Okay.
But initially, he has to elect the president, and then he will have to be part of that.
All right. Nominate Mr. Gerlach.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Okay. As indicated earlier, Meg is not able to be with us tonight, nor is Dewey. Given that, I'm going to move forward and begin the process of selecting our officers. As you can see, I have identified officers that included as their first choice a specific office, President Meg Earler, Vice President Chris Scott, Clerk Barb Portson, Treasurer Amy Daly. You, as a board, have an option of approving a slate of officers as presented, or you have the option of individually selecting your officers. What is your preference?
I would move for individual selection.
It doesn't have to be any movement on that.
That would be my choice.
Hearing that, there's an interest of individual selection, I will begin by taking nomination for board president for the 2017-18 term.
Mr. Chairman, appoint a order, please. As some may know, in Robert's Rules of Order, you cannot nominate somebody who is not present. And we have an individual who has expressed an interest to be president who is not here. It would be appropriate, it's time for me to ask unanimous consent to suspend the rules and allow somebody who is not present to be nominated and selected for an office position.
Second. Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you, Dewey.
We have a motion in a second to suspend that order.
Actually, I'm just asking for unanimous consent, so if there are no objections, then we can move forward.
Right. And I don't hear any objections, so we can move forward on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, for sure. So, I would like to nominate Meg Earler for board president.
And I'll second that. Oh, you beat me?
No, probably.
Before we get to that, please, we have a nomination for Meg Earler as board president, and I need to say that a second time.
Yes, right.
At this point, I will take, again, nominations for board president. Hearing none and seeing none, we have a nomination for President Meg Earler. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the nominations be closed and that Meg Earler be elected as president by acclamation.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Meg Earler is our president for the 17-18 school year.
Meg, if you're watching, congratulations.
At this time, I will take nominations for position or office of vice president.
I'd like to nominate myself for that.
And I'd like to nominate myself for that, Chris Scott.
We have two nominations. We have Chris Scott and Amy Daly. I'll ask one more time, are there any other nominations for vice president?
I nominate Jill.
You're withdrawing your nomination?
We have two nominations for vice president, Amy Daly and Chris Scott. At this point in time.
Are you going to do secret ballots?
We will.
Written ballots?
We have written ballots. Again, this will identify your selection for school board vice president.
Well, that was going to help you. We were trying to be helpful. Doesn't work.
No peeking.
Let's reminisce while they're talking, while they're coming. Remember back in the day when it took 25 ballots and we still didn't get a president?
Yeah, really.
She's really glad we're not there anymore.
And Chris Scott has been elected on a four-three vote.
Oh, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
At this time, you would take over as the vice chair.
So, nominations are now in order for the office of clerk.
Barb Portson.
Okay, Barb Portson has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations for the office of clerk? Okay. If I hear none, Barb, I don't believe we need to vote on that. By consensus and by acclamation, you're appointed, elected as the board clerk. Congratulations.
Thank you. Good job.
Okay.
Didn't even have to give a speech.
I know. Nominations are now in order for the office of treasurer. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Amy Daly.
Okay. Are there any other nominations for the office of treasurer? Any other nomination? If not, Amy Daly is our new and second year of treasurer. And if we are in consensus, we have a clerk by acclamation. Congratulations, Amy.
Treasurer.
Ah, treasurer, I'm sorry. Sorry, sorry. Okay. All right, next on our agenda, and forgive me if I'm a little slow here, I have not run a board meeting or organizational meeting for a while, so I'll make sure I cover everything. Okay. Board secretary is next. Would anyone like to nominate Sue?
I will nominate Sue.
Second.
All right. Are there any nominations? I don't think there are. Is there a second?
You want a second?
Really? You want a second on this? Okay. If we have consensus, and I believe we do, Sue Kedronowitz is our new and present board secretary. Congratulations, Sue. Thank you. Okay, next, we have the election of chairs for board standing committees. Okay, so our first committee, well, we should look at, I think we had information on members who chose.
This is also information that was provided from the survey.
Right.
And this reflects board members' first selection as chair of the specific committee.
Right. So, the slate in which people made their first choice, we don't obviously have to say to a slate, but business chair, business services committee chair was Amy Daly, human resources Judy Rannau, educational services chair Barb Portson, policy and legislation committee chair Dan Kantos. We can do each one individually, but if the board prefers to accept those as a slate, we can also do that.
Do we approve of the chairs?
Okay.
Second.
Second, okay. I don't think we need a roll call unless someone has a concern. So, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, we have our chairs of our committees, and I'm excited. I think it's really great. Barb, it's new. You guys have done a great job. Really, the three of you that have already been chairs, it's really been a pleasure watching you chair the committees. Okay, next, board committee, this is item nine, board and committee starting times. So, one of the things that came up, and I'm only speaking first because I want to at least let you know that, one of the conversations was putting the times on meetings. Several years ago, when we came up with the times, there was a suggestion that committees should be an hour, and someone else suggested that they should be an hour and a half. And I said, how about if we compromise and make them an hour and 15 minutes? And then next year, look at how those times came up. It's up to the committee or the board to decide how we do that. We can start earlier, we can limit the meetings to having the, some of the meetings that take lesser time start first, but it's up for discussion on how we want to do that. I'll give my opinion at the end, but anyone want to change the time or look at the time for those committees and for the board? Barb?
I'd like to see them start earlier, like maybe 6:00, board meetings and committee meetings. I think last time we asked for that, Trish couldn't make it because of her job, but she has a different job.
Yeah, I don't, I have to say, though, harking back to something that Lisa Totten said once, is that the public expects us to always start at the same time, and that, I have to say, I agree with her. I could come earlier, and I know our Park Ridge meetings, we start at 5:30, but the one nice thing about 6:30 is you actually get to eat a little dinner, but I don't, you do get to eat before you come. But I kind of like the idea of the consistency of always starting all of our meetings, or the vast majority of our meetings at 6:30. I think that that's really good for our public, for our constituents, that they know that 99 times out of 100, our meetings start at the same time, which is 6:30.
Well, what I would recommend would be moving everything to 6:00.
Board and committees.
Yeah. Yeah, I couldn't have before, but I could make that now. Yeah.
Dan?
I like the idea. I would support that.
6:00. Judy?
I may not be able to. I just left work and made it just in time for 6:30, so there may be times that I may not be here at 6:00.
I would say, unless there is a compelling reason to move it, I would tend to agree with Trish that there's something to be said about consistency. The 6:30 time is what people are accustomed to, they expect it, and it works for me. I mean, 6:00 would work too, but again, is there a compelling reason to move it?
Um, doesn't matter, I live three blocks away. But I would say, I need to make sure we see the right section we bring it up, in regards to starting time, we have where they all start for committee meetings at 6:30, and then the second round starts at 7:45. And we've done that forever because we found it to be unfair for public to have the clock rate and not know when the second meeting was going to start, or for when, if you were a citizen member on that committee, not knowing when your meeting would start. I would say, at least for the human resources committee, they should be able to start immediately after Ed Services, since they don't have any community members that would have to sit and wait for their time to sit on the committee. But I wouldn't recommend that for others. Because Dan, we wouldn't want people to have to sit through my meeting just to get a good look at your meeting.
No, I understand that. I think there's some wisdom to that, having a definite start time for them.
So, one of the discussions was, do we need, did the committee meetings need to be an hour and 15 minutes? And it seems to me that HR and business services do not need to, have not needed to have an hour and 15 minutes.
I disagree with you for business services, there's times we've gone right up to the rest of the night. If there's other stuff with the business, I wouldn't.
Gone over.
Well, I guess if we're not, okay, well, my opinion is, I think it's, we set it up 6:30 and an hour and 15 minutes, and I think starting a meeting at 7:45, I don't know if everybody else is working, you know, that long of a day, I am, and starting meetings at 7:45 seems a little late. So, you know, we have options. We can start at 6:30, and we can have the meetings that we believe are going to be longer be the second meeting of the evening, but we don't know yet how we're going to set those up, who can make what meetings. I prefer 6:00. I would rather have start at 6:00 and then have that first meeting be an hour, or if we start at 6:00 and they want to be 1:15, that's 7:15, that's a lot easier than 7:45. That's a long, and the longer you get in the night doing that, I think the less productive, so. If everyone, if you want to vote and decide you want to have, I don't even know if we have to vote, if we have consensus, or just take a vote and see how many people want, and we don't have Meg here. We can vote, start them, and the consistency.
You would need a motion, and until there's a motion on the table, I wouldn't know if I'd want to vote or not, so. We need somebody to make a motion if something wants to be changed before we'd say, do you want to vote or not? Because I don't know what we would be voting on.
Okay, would you like to make a motion? Would anyone like to make a motion? I do agree with the consistency, though. If we're going to have the board meetings start at 6:00, we should have committee meetings probably start at 6:00 or 6:30, but we can also limit the time of the meetings, so.
I would suggest that with some uncertainty with the conversation, you continue business as usual.
Okay.
That would be my suggestion.
Okay, that's fine. All right, so, all right. So, next is item 10, which is the appointment of members for board standing committees. Sue, maybe you could put the chairs up on the board, and then we can take a look at, people made first choices, that doesn't mean you can't change them, because we haven't even decided what meetings would be on what nights.
You can see, again, in your packet, again, this is the information off the survey that was set, sent out to you guys last month. Business services, those indicated their choice for business services was Amy, Dan, Trish, and Dewey. Policy and legislation, Dan, Amy, Dewey, Trish. Ed services, Barb, Judy, Jeff, Chris. HR, Judy, Barb, Chris, and Jeff. That's right off the survey that you guys, I think last year, you guys.
That's exactly where we were.
May had some discussion on, you know, who can make what nights, and it worked a little bit better to have this with that, or that particular committee attached to one based on your personal schedules.
Yeah, my availability is Monday night, so whatever two committees are going to be on Monday, I'm going to go to the surf on Thursday morning.
Have you got that sheet?
Sorry.
I've got it. I just got mine. Got a lot of sheets, Eric.
Oh. Oh, no. I'm not here.
Trisha, you're going to be at service?
No, Barb is.
Sorry, I was thinking this year.
That's the same.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Everything else is.
Thank you.
We're giving Barb a chance to sit in the big chair. You wanted it, right? Barb, Barb.
Sorry, Barb.
What? You wanted it.
Oh, thank you. Going along with it, if it's not broke, don't fix it. If everybody put in what they wanted and this is what works for them, why would we consider changing time, dates, people on the committees? And I would move to approve, as presented, exactly what we had last year.
Second.
Wait a second, though.
Well, as stated here.
Well, the chairs, but who sits on what committee, the same. So, you.
The same or as stated in the survey?
In the thing.
What are we approving? That would be the same.
So, Ed Services and Human Resources would be on Monday.
Monday.
Business and Policy would be on Tuesday, Ed Services, HR on Monday, and Business Services would be Amy Daly, Dan Kantos, Trish Baker. Policy and Legislation would be Dan Kantos, Amy Daly, and Trish Baker. Ed Services, Barb, Judy, Jeff, and Chris. HR, Judy, Barb, Chris, and Jeff.
How's that sound, everybody?
It's Dewey, right?
Yep.
That would be later. And then the newly appointed whoever would be that they can see on Tuesday night.
Go ahead, Trish.
Can I move, if this is not going to cause, this might be a problem, if it's a problem, can I move to the Tuesday night Educational Services and Human Resources Committee?
That's Monday.
Oh, perfect, okay, so.
Ed Services and HR are on Monday night.
So, can I move my names to Ed Services and Human Resources? I apologize, that would work for me better.
Aren't you?
We're going to have to bump somebody.
So, that means I'm getting off of Business Services and off of Policy and Legislation.
Probably be, Chris, you're the only other one to bump.
I got bumped last year. I got bumped for the same two. I chose.
The other two are chairs, so.
I know. Just bump me where you need to, and I said that in the beginning. Let people get where they need to get. I prefer, I picked the committees I wanted last year, and I said at the end, get people where they need to be, and I'm flexible, I'll move.
So, I'm hearing that. Trish, you would be on Ed Services and HR.
Yes, that would be my.
And Chris Scott would then be on Business Services and Policy and Legislation. Is that right?
So, then it really would be like it was this year.
Chris, is that okay by you?
That's fine.
That'd be great.
Do you want me to read that back? I hope everybody got it.
I think we haven't.
Everyone stays on the committees they were on.
Or just switching.
Switcheroo.
We're switcherooing. All right. We're all good with that. All right, number 11 is the appointment of board members to committees. These are the additional committees, not the standing committees. So, the first one is district negotiations. So, is there interest of anyone serving on the district negotiations committee? We can have up to three.
I will serve on any of these at the pleasure of the board, so I'm just making myself available.
All right. Judy, are you interested?
I'm not going to be able to make the meetings.
Okay. Jeff, you are? Okay. Amy?
Nope.
Okay. I'll go around before I say me. Barb? Dan?
Prefer not to.
Trish?
Negotiations? No, thank you.
And I would. Now, that leaves us with two, but you can have up to three, and.
You two can handle it.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're fine, unless someone else wants to. Okay, Boston School Forest.
I nominate Barb.
Barb, would you like to do that?
Sure.
Would anyone else like to do that?
I'd be interested in that one.
Okay. You, I think it's only one person, so.
Take turns.
Take turns?
Take turns, no. So, how do you want to handle that?
How many meetings a year is?
There's, there's not.
Four.
I think there's four.
Yeah.
So, I'm interested in.
They're usually, they're usually earlier morning, yeah. The tech meetings are at 4:30. I struggle to get to them on time, as Brian can tell you.
Okay, well.
I'll withdraw from any of these, and whoever wants them can.
Well, or you could do Boston, and I'll do tech.
So, I mean, I'm open to whatever is needed.
Yeah.
Or wanted, so.
Me too. Okay, well, I need a name. Who wants to do Boston?
I'll do that one, if.
Okay. Boston?
It's fun.
Okay, and next is the CISA 5 delegate. That's one meeting a year. It's either in Portage or Stevens Point. I don't know where it is this year.
Where was it last year?
Portage.
I think it was Portage.
Should be in Point this year.
Yeah, it's like an hour meeting, and you're just showing up for our district. We belong to the CISA 5 district. And you vote for that.
Arm wrestle? Go ahead. Arm wrestle? Come on, come on.
It's Trish. I nominate Trish.
I nominate Trish.
You said nominate. You, Judy, seriously, you, seriously, you said you wanted to be on that. You're on the list.
Well, no, I just, basically, it was anything that they needed.
Okay.
I mean, so.
Okay, now the big one, technology steering.
I nominate me.
Okay, Barb, you're it. That was easy. Anybody else?
I have enjoyed going to those. If you want to, you should go, but they are, they start at 4:30, and I, that's very, I have really struggled getting there at 4:30, but I really enjoyed being on that.
Okay, well, I may see if I can make one or two just to sit in, because I. I'm already geeky that way.
Yeah, I think they'll let you sit in.
I think so.
Tell them who you are.
Did I not hear that you would be, you're interested? Okay, so we have Barb, we have Trudy.
No, I'll, if, I'm going to just.
Trudy.
No, Barb, and I'm just saying that if I can just sit in and observe, I'll do that, and see if I can even make any before I make a commitment for future.
Okay. So, Craig has Barb and Trish, no, wait, Judy and Trish has Trudy. We have a new one, Trudy.
We have a new member.
Sorry, I just had to put that in there. Okay. The next is our WASB delegate and legislative liaison.
Oh, Mr. Kantos.
Mr. Kantos, we love to have you serve in that capacity.
How can I say no?
You can. Yes or no?
No, no, he's, yes, he's Dan Kantos. Well, he's that. You get all those?
He's honored.
Okay.
That's awesome. That's awesome. Okay, item 12 on our agenda this evening is Business Service, the approval of the Signature Facsimile Resolutions. If you've read what that is, either Craig or Tom, if anyone needs more...
I'm going to hand that over to Tom.
Tom?
It allows us to continue to use the facsimile signature and checks and things like that on officers.
I will move to approve the Continued Signature Facsimile Use Resolution and the New Signature Facsimile Resolution.
Second.
All right. I don't think we need a roll call. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that's good. Item, I lost my item 13 somewhere here. Oh, here we are. Actually, it's just meeting?
No.
No, no, we had something else.
Approval of Resolution Designating School District Depositories. So, I would move to approve the Resolution Designating Qualified Financial Institutions as Public Depositories for Funds of the District. Speak to this item. It's a housekeeping item, just like the last one. We have to do it every year.
Second.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, we got that going too. I'm sorry, this is such a mess. I had to print this out twice, and it got pulled apart right before the meeting, so I really apologize. Okay, next. On our, let's see what we have there. Yeah, that's the old one.
Future times, dates.
Yeah. Okay, so we've already done that. We need future times and dates. Can I borrow your sheet? Would you mind?
Each item is highlighted.
Thanks. Okay, so, future dates, meeting dates, times, locations, and future agenda items. May 8, 2017, at 6:30. June 12, and July 10 for our meetings, all at 6:30. All right, next is a motion to go into closed session per Statute 19.85, parent one, parent C. Closed session considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, specifically to discuss bargaining strategy with ASME. And also, closed session 1985, parent one, parent C. Closed session considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, specifically administrative and staff strategy, stipends, and offers. Do I have a motion?
Move to go under closed.
Okay, Jeff, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Let's do a roll call, please.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Rano?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Daly?
Yep.
Yes. Mr. Contos?
Yes.
Ms. Portson?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
It passes.
Okay, we're in closed session. Okay, we are in open session, and we have a recommendation on an administrative offer. Does anyone have a recommendation that would like to make a motion?
You need a motion?
I do need a motion, please.
Move that the School Board approve a 1.26% salary increase for the administrator group to be distributed among administrators as presented.
Second. All right. Any discussion? Okay, let's take a roll call on that. Sue?
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Portson?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
No.
Ms. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Contos?
Yes.
Ms. Rano?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
It passes, six yes, one no.
All right. The next item on our agenda, 16B, is the stipend compensation.
Move to approve, oh, you need a motion?
Do you want a motion first?
Presentation.
Yeah, let me have a little discussion on it first. This is the first time that I'm bringing this forward, excuse me. This has been a very, I think, a very successful year as we've created compensation models for our employees. That's been talked about for many years in the school district. In moving from not having compensation models to having compensation models, it's a great task, and there's a lot involved with that. In doing so, there are employees that are seeing different levels of increases, some greater than others. Some are not seeing increases based on what they're currently making. I'm suggesting that the Board support a 1% stipend for all employees, except bus drivers, they're clearly in a different category, for all employees that haven't received at least a minimum of a 1% increase through the transition of the salary schedules. When we've created the salary schedules, and you've just done so with the administrative team, there are administrators that will be receiving an increase, and there will be administrators that will not be. The same thing with teachers. Support staff will be seeing increases, but they do vary as well. That is a result of the new models that have been created, where we're fixing a number of inequities with all of our groups, inequities that have been talked about since I've been in the school district, inequities that have been involved, that you've talked about as a School Board for several years. This would allow each employee, other than bus drivers, they're a completely separate bargaining unit, to receive a minimum of a 1% stipend. When I say stipend, it's a one-time payment, it's non-base building. So, for an administrator, for example, that would not receive an increase, they would receive a 1% stipend. We have many teachers that are off the grid, if I may. Our grid goes up to $70,000. If you're a teacher that's off the grid, you will not see a base wage increase. I'm suggesting that you approve a 1% stipend for that. Again, it's a one-time stipend, it does not get attached to their base wage. We also have teachers within the grid, based on where they're at, that may receive a significant increase based on where they were placed originally, or they may receive no increase, or they may receive something in between. So, the stipend would take those that haven't received an increase and would give them a 1% stipend, non-base building. And those that are receiving, maybe they're receiving a half a percent, for example, in the transition, they would then receive another half a percent in a stipend, non-base building. All of the base wages would continue to be the same for the 18, 19 school year. Any questions on that?
Questions, anyone? Comments? Yes, Murph?
If somebody is appealing their placement, that would be delayed until that was settled?
Yes, yeah. And we're rolling all of that out at this particular point in time, and, you know, there will be some people that will appeal that, and we'll make those decisions on an individual basis. And again, I can't emphasize enough, this is the conclusion of a lot of time and effort and energy on a lot of different people, including our employees, to create salary schedules that we believe are more competitive, more fair. And in doing so, the first year, and this is the first year that I've gone through the transition of salary schedules. And all of my counterparts, all of my colleagues have said, Craig, the first year, our legal counsel has said this, "The first year is the most challenging because of all the spinning parts." And you can't go from that, not having schedules, to having schedules with all of the inequities that we want to clear up without costing additional funds. And I'm asking that those additional funds be in the package of a stipend versus non-base building.
Any questions, comments? Okay, if you look at item 16B, there is a recommendation for a motion. If anyone would like to make the motion?
Move to approve the 2017-18 school year, a one-time stipend for all employees, with the exception of the bus drivers, which ensures the receipt of at least a 1% increase over the prior year when combined with other compensation.
Second. Let's take a roll call on that too, Sue, okay?
Mr. Evil?